Complete order, as Dan Stark with the pledge of allegiance agree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Call board roll call, starting on my right.
Councilperson John.
Councilperson Brenfire.
Mayor Jimmy John Kang.
Councilperson Jeremiah Olson.
Approval of tonight's agenda. Anything from staff?
We should be good.
Anything here?
I'll make a motion approved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next will be looking for approval of the regular meeting minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion approved those minutes.
Now we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Alright, then we're looking for approval of the budget workshop minutes of September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion approved those minutes.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Financing budgets next, we got the accounts payable there with the additional accounts listing, if you have any questions, you can ask finance lady Kelly.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the accounts payable, do we have a second?
Second.
No further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That's gonna take us right into motions and general business for tonight, and the first item under motions and general business would be a public hearing. It will be on the property plan. Uh, the city has received complaints regarding the condition of the property owned by Lori Chin, two oh two Second Avenue Southwest. The notice of the public hearing was sent on August twenty-sixth, attached in here along the pictures. As of September eighteenth, the taller weeds were cut but not removed, the miscellaneous junk still remains. Um, updated pictures have been provided prior to this public hearing. So now, I'm going to close the regular meeting, open a public hearing. Pursuant to City Code Section six hundred and six ten, the City Council will consider the above described nuisance. This public hearing is your opportunity to be heard of this matter and to present any evidence or arguments you believe the City Council should consider regarding the ordinance violations. Any written or verbal?
So the San Juan called me over the weekend and wanted us to come and visit with them. Um, he said he made progress, but wasn't sure if it goes up to our standards. Um, but didn't leave a phone number or anything, so I called back. So I did drive by there today, and you know, a lot of it is taken care of. More could probably still be done, so I recommend you still go ahead and declare the nuisance and then we'll deal with them. Um, hopefully he'll call or...
I have both their phone numbers.
Oh, do you? Okay, perfect.
Questions here at table? Questions public, anybody up there want to speak? Alright, if there's a... No further questions or discussion, I oppose the public hearing. Open regular meeting back up. Given the action requested, based on the finding of facts, the City Council, what we'd like to do is hereby order the abatement of the nuisance, and will enter upon the property and remove the pending items. And it shall also be the responsibility of the property owner to pay for the cost instead of abatement, including attorney's fee, administrative costs, which may be assessed of the property and be paid with your property taxes. Do we have a motion to, uh, continue with the abatement?
I'll make motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second, do we have any questions or discussion about it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us on the next item, which is a flag display ordinance. This will be the first reading, so there'll be no action on it tonight, discussion tonight. City of Sturridge does not currently have a formal policy regarding the display of our flags on city-owned property. Establishing a clear and consistent policy will ensure that the flags displays are managed in a respectful, non-discriminatory, and legally compliant manner. A formal policy also provides guidance for the staff and reinforces community values and minimizes the risk of disputes or challenges. We have ordinance attached, would you like me to read the ordinance?
You don't need to know.
Okay.
Maybe you can find it on the website.
It'll be on the website, and everyone at this table, I assume, has read it?
Yep.
So, discussion, questions?
For section two, like I know we got the US flag, the Minnesota flag, and then the armed forces. I'd like to add another option in there, like if it's approved by the City Council. Like if we ever make a Stewartville flag, like that would be one I would want to be able to...
City flag?
Yeah, something like that. Doesn't have to necessarily be a city flag, but one that could be approved.
By the City Council.
I think probably a flag of the city would probably be more of an indoor type one. This is possibly falling out there for certain occasions. So you're basically open the ticket request yet from anybody who wants to come in and ask?
Uh, yeah, I just don't wanna say no, because I know there's been like, like the big things on the council since I've been on here, been on is like the trees, where there were no boulevard trees, there were no chickens. Now we can plant certain trees, and we can have chickens. I just don't wanna close the door completely, I wanna give people a chance to make their case.
Well, sometimes, Josh, by closing the door completely, as you call it, it makes it pretty clear cut and concise what can and cannot be done. But sometimes it is a better option than spending a lot of time on people's choices, I guess you'd say.
Well, I, that's just my thoughts, I, I don't know what you guys think, but...
Well, you know what I think, so, I mean, I know what you think, you know what I think, I don't know what these other do. I thought I could read your minds, but I guess I can't. Either one, you got anything to say?
The only thing I can see that's missing is that I know the fire department has a flag down there, and that's a city-owned building, and they're flying that Stewartville Fire Department flag.
Yeah, I guess my, I, I was curious, and we, you know, we do have a flag, like Jimmy John said, it's, you know, usually only indoors, but that was an option. I didn't think about the fire department.
Staff may input, 'cause you're the ones that are gonna get the phone calls, you're the ones that are gonna... Would you rather have a pretty concise, there you go, this is what it's gonna be, and this is how we do it, so we have an answer for folks, or we gotta say, we'll think about it?
My opinion is yes, I would prefer, 'cause we do get phone calls all the time, you get jumped on the street, and it's why aren't we doing this and that? And it's become a political thing, where people are trying to turn it political, and this way it wipes all that out. And it's just, this is what it's for, we've been, we put the flags up and down. If we did it every single time asked, they're, they're up, or they're half-staffed, or they're up. And it's just kinda, in my opinion, takes away from some of the, if we do it that often. So I think we should be able to find exactly what it is and follow that.
Well, yes. You make a very good point that you have to be very, very careful. You don't have to, but it has become quite a political thing. If you don't fly for this one way, if you fly for that one, if you did, why don't you do this? To me, it's still, if you can have clear, concise rules, it's, just makes it that simple for everyone.
And what I'm asking for too could be in section five, the exemptions, 'cause it is...
Section four, sorry, John.
Section five, it'd be an indoor, like if they're indoors, like that. That is where they can be approved by the City Council, so it could go in there too. Like then it makes a clear cut for outside, but inside, there's still an option inside.
Well, that's what this tonight is for, 'cause it's no, tonight is for discussion, huh, so, we'll bring it back, see if we need to have added anything in. Are you somewhat satisfied with the way it is printed out?
I agree with Sean, and otherwise we, maybe we get people complaining now about everything, so... But why we do this and that, I mean, it has to be something written down.
But I mean, your question's answered, I mean, you feel like yours, your question be answered on the five?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright.
I think we need to add the fire department flags to say fly it on the third pole.
Yeah, and what we've done is listed the ones traditionally that have been used. Now, just because a couple of these extras would be allowed, doesn't mean we'll always fly those. You know, like in some of our buildings, we don't have the state flag available. Um, not all our buildings have all the military ones.
But we need to...
These would be allowed ones if a council...
Yep.
Yeah, so like the fire department, I would recommend adding it. If, if the ordinance is so, is if something else pops up, we can go and say it's not part of it. I would, you know, I would just, I don't know.
And the military ones?
Yeah.
Part of our park system down there now, so...
Yeah, I'm fine.
So, before they're here, you're pretty well satisfied?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything from Craig, did he send you any comments or anything? He'll let us know.
Yeah, this is, this is thrown out, you can get some feedback now, and, and I think you might have a revision, you can...
He just questioned which one, sort of like...
Well, he was just wondering which one...
Is considered the...
We don't know for sure, we keep flip-flopping up there. Anyhow, this is the first reading of this ordinance, the last one will be done tonight, the ordinance will be brought back at October fourteenth meeting for approval. So you'll have time to take in comments. Alright, next item will be twenty twenty-five water meter replacement project. As discussed previously at the council workshop, with the budget meetings, our water meters are coming to the end of their life. These replacements will be paid for with reserve funds from the water and wastewater funds. We have decided to remain with Census, Core Main. As their bid came in below the other companies that we reviewed, we are currently updating meters with the new meters and radios as needed, so we... So this will decrease replacement in every home with the project. The bid from Census for the meters and the radios is six hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. There is also an additional amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty for AMI, and twenty thousand, five hundred and forty for a yearly subscription. We would like permission to pay the whole amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred thousand, so that we may obtain the current pricing, because as we all know, things seem to change daily, prices.
Sean, it's AMI, and what do we get for a twenty thousand dollar a year subscription?
That's, that's to be able to use that software.
With twenty grand, just the software?
Twenty grand a year to be able to use the software. That's not uncommon, others have different ways of doing it, some of them are through wifi. Uh, so you're doing it through that, and you're paying different subscriptions there, there are little pricing for those, but you're paying something about them.
What's AMI stand for?
AMI is the reading unit to...
On your truck or whatever, you can put it.
Well, this one, obviously, we're going to stationary. So this one is capable of putting antenna up, it'll read, it reads the meters, whatever you program it to, like every fifteen minutes. You're capable of finding water leaks in people's houses. It's a, it's a benefit to the homeowners also, because your water's not gonna leak for thirty days before you catch it.
It'll read from here, is that what you're saying?
Yep, it reads, there'll be antenna set up, it depends, there might be one or two, depending on if they can read the whole town. And anticipating one, uh, and they can read the entire town, and it red flags when you have a high usage of houses using six units in one day. It'll flag it way quicker, and save the homeowners a ton of money that way, or it could possibly...
So would you be able to do like a, like a printout or something, someone that gives, kinda like the electric company has on their website, where it gives their daily usage and...
We can show, we can pull this back into the software and find exactly when it started leaking, and show that to homeowners. They can log into, on their phones, they can join the app, and they can log in and see their own.
And that's available, that's gonna be available to all homeowners?
Yep. We, our software is coming to an end, as I were doing this, they're, they will no longer, uh, we can no longer get the stuff to keep what we have going. So we have to switch to something, uh, and they predict that you get twenty years out of the holder rate of twenty years, so...
So I was just gonna ask on this, do they tell you like how long, I mean, they promise ten years, fifteen years, twenty years on this, or what you're saying?
Was it twenty? I was thinking of ten. They, they said, I know he said you'd get at least twenty out of the software before they would do any, where they would change it to the point that it's no longer used. But I'm trying to think, as far as the meters and something, we got ten year, I can't remember that exactly.
What's the difference between the two companies, AMI?
One's through wifi?
Besides a hundred thousand dollars.
Huh?
Besides a hundred thousand dollars.
Census is actually a little more expensive per radio and per meter, but because we already have them in, we've got some that will not have to change, so it ends up making them cheaper, uh, for, to change over. But, as far, but, like theirs are directly...
Their price of AMI is a hundred and thirteen five, and the other one's fourteen thousand.
Yep, but, because that one's through the wifi. So, or cellular, not wifi, cellular, I should say. So you're gonna have a cellular subscription with that one to do this and stuff like that, and you're at the mercy of someone with a cellular. But, so it is cheaper to go with that one in that category, but all in all, when it's said and done in the end, it's, uh, Census is the cheapest one.
Okay, so...
And we raised our water rates, when we did this last hand around, uh, actually I was doing that one, we raised the water rates to fund, uh, meter replacements. So that money is sitting there in the deal amount, and that's where we asked about, can we get, can we get approval for the full funding of it now in case the pricing on the stuff is going to take a big jump at the first of the year? We may just decide if it's not much of a jump, they give us a heads up on it, and we'll just order everything I have here and start changing everything over, just to save us money on what the price increases could be. But if it's not, and then we won't have this whole thing this year. But the money is there in the water fund for this, because we have raised it, it's been doing what it's supposed to do, with anticipation of twenty years ago, that in twenty years, we would be needing to replace these.
Who's gonna, who's gonna replace them on the whole?
We are.
Sample there. We wouldn't say, like, how long will that take? Whatever you have done.
Just kinda depends, well, we send flyers out and stuff and try and get people scheduling, and sometimes we'll have to have somebody scheduled coming in the evening, just 'cause some people aren't gonna take work, have to be home, and we do what we gotta do. Uh, during the winter time, I'd like to get approval now, so in the winter time, if we have a slow winter with snow again, that maybe I can get three guys maybe going out and doing it and helping get it done. But we'll pluck our way through it and figure it out.
So you run the old system and new system in parallel until all the...
We'll have to read two different ways. So we can continue reading the old ones without the AMI right away. We may not purchase AMI until we get everything switched over, 'cause we can continue the drive-by reading. And if we gotta intermittently do it anyway, it's probably just easiest to keep that, and then we would get the AMI. Unless, again, that was gonna do a twenty percent price increase, and we thought, well, let's get it now, then, before we hit a big jump in price.
Of all people with two water meters, what does that impact there?
Probably the impact, I don't know, it'll be the same.
Can you, can they get it reduced to one? How would that?
Anyone can reduce to one anytime they want to, but you're gonna get billed for the wastewater on that second meter. If you don't use a second meter that much, my advice is, 'cause you get a minimum charge on that, if people are using their second meter, they should probably just go to one meter. But if people, water have sprinkler systems, stuff like that, then maybe it pays, I don't know. I, I've, we had a lot of people that put two meters in, that switched back to one meter, 'cause they realized it really didn't save them that much, 'cause, say, you know, what season, you're still paying for two units on that, 'cause that's our minimum charge, and they're not even using it, so...
And this is supposed to continue to be on the water bill for in twenty years, when it's a million and a half dollars, although we could pay for it?
Well, it worked this last round, you may have to adjust it somehow, I can see what it does, but it's, the money's sitting there now from what we...
No, I'm, I'm just saying that it's just gonna continue on the bill though.
Again, yeah, 'cause now we'll start the process.
Twenty years, it'll probably be a million and a half dollars.
And then we may have to make adjustments and raise a little bit, but so far, it worked what we did, that's why we didn't wanna raise rates for it now, because the money's there, it worked what we set aside previously.
Alright, any other questions or discussion? Council accident question is, do you approve or deny the low bid with Census to purchase water meters, radios, AMI, and the yearly subscription?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That'll take us to the next item, which is the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, there're gonna be two, there'll be two votes on this one, so. City Council needs to certify the preliminary levy to the county on or before September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The levy that the council adopts can only be decreased in the final levy, no increases. As a result, those special budget means council directs staff to prepare the proposed levy at four point five increase in city taxes. Based on the preliminary twenty twenty-six budget of twelve million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, this amount is to a proposed levy of five million, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, four hundred and seventy-five. At an increase of seven hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five from the twenty twenty-five seventy-five. This levy is based on tax capacity increase, homestead exclusion, credit adjustments. The swimming pool referendum levy is a hundred and thirty-nine, two, two, nine, and the fire hall referendum is a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty. We'll need to set a truth and taxation meeting, that'll have to be scheduled, to present the proposed levy and budget to the public hearing, and to receive their input. Staff is recommending that truth and taxation be set for Monday, December first, at six P M, with a continuing meeting if necessary, at the regular council meeting on December ninth. Alright, we get, we'll have to make two resolutions on this, you guys have you read through, Kelly did a lot of, uh, extra work, she figured up everything I asked her to figure out and put it here in a nice format for you, I've asked a few questions on it. It's pretty interesting, you read it, I had, had me confused a minute, but she straightened me out on what I was looking at. She did, uh, you see it's on several different health prices there, and on several business prices. Now, if you have any questions right now, it's time to ask, we've, um, we've all got our budget books, I hope you continue to look in your budget books and look through areas that perhaps we can do something else. I myself think we can get her down a little bit, but that's I myself. Uh, the rest, you stand on it. So if you have any questions right now, now's the time to ask Kelly, I'm on here. If you're different, I don't see that. You got the wheels turning. Remember, this is as high as we can go, if we put this in at four or five, you can't go any higher, even go lower, you can't go higher.
Yep.
So you have a couple minutes after this to look at, if you think it might be something.
When does the final budget have to be?
But this preliminary's gotta get ready, we've gotten pretty close to the decision.
I think we do the format for tonight, huh? And then I'll look through it and see.
You'd be, you're, you're kind of a math guy, you can study a little bit, you could use this in your math class.
Use it as an exercise.
Take that worksheet right in.
Drop some graphs for him.
Let them be a part.
Well, there's been a lot of hard work put into this, Kelly's done an excellent job. I'm fine with a preliminary levy of four or five, I, I myself still personally think there may be a couple areas we can do something, but you also gotta remember, it takes some pretty big cut, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't do much, you gotta, you gotta make some cuts, if you make some cuts, to bring it, to make it a mountain, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's all the numbers in good here is like...
It's 'cause it's four, four, what's four, four and a half now? You know, and you take twenty-five out there, it comes back at four point four nine or something, I don't know, two dollars. So you gotta remember that too, if we're gonna look, we gotta look harder. Which I really should, at least consider the idea of taking a look, so... If you got no questions, I guess we'll move on, huh? Here's no discussion. So the first one's gonna be adopt resolution twenty twenty-five to ask for resolution approving the twenty-five proposed tax levy collect mode twenty twenty-six. Do what it is, set it four or five, correct?
Yes.
Alright, all in favor, or make a motion, I guess, first?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. So the next motion we need, set truth and taxation public meeting for Monday, December first, at six P M, with continuation at the December ninth meeting if needed.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one carries also. So, that makes us out of motions and general business. Takes us to mayor staff assault report, mayor's report tonight. City of Sturridge would like to send their sympathies to the families of Judy Hadler and Pat Early. Happy seventy-fifth birthday to Roger Peterson. Congratulations, Roger, shake his hand when you see him, pat him on the back, tell him you done a good job, 'cause he has... Chambers Oktoberfest will be this Saturday at Two Brothers from six to eight P M. Scully Cruisers last Friday night is this week. Community Band is holding a concert on Sunday, September twenty-eighth at Zion. Farmer's Market at Methodist Church ending tomorrow night. The fiftieth annual Firefighters Breakfast is Sunday, October fifth, from eight to noon. The fiftieth class reunion of nineteen seventy-five will be held this weekend. So there'll be a lot of old guys and gals in town, so watch out. They're old, we're covering it all. Now, it's gonna be safe, lock up your pets and stuff like that. I've got nothing else to add, except I'd like to thank Kelly again for all the work she put in, and Bill, and all the staff that has added in to help with their ideas and stuff. Other than that, I have nothing else to say, so, Bill, you're the administrator.
Yep, reports in your pocket, just a big list of just items happening around. Again, thanks to staff, or thank the staff for all of our input, you all working with us on that budget, we'll keep working with you as the next two months roll by. And then just a special call out to Jacob Chot, he did a lot of research for us as well on that water study and personal work, and then Angela assisted him, so we appreciate the rest of our staff giving us a helping hand, so...
They've done a great job with that, that capsule, really, awesome.
Yeah.
That was a lot of extra work, those two did a lot.
Thank them, of course. One thing I forgot, and Bill forgot, if you see a lot of kids running around, real happy this week, it's homecoming, it's his homecoming week, the game will be Friday night. I'm pretty sure Taylor's gonna get that.
We could probably have toilet paper today.
Um, Justin's gonna, please stop. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. City engineer reported, oops, 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 sorry. I'm just so giddy about the budget and everything around here. Finance officers report, Kelly?
No report.
What? Might as well skip over the good night. Alright, now public works director, Sean?
Uh, there are reports in there, I'm gonna add just a couple of things, uh, we did, we've been working on the city hall bids for, uh, repairs for the building here, we need to do top pointing, and our entrance, we have water damage, so we got... We got bids to get that fixed. We wanna take time to go through those bids. Next meeting, we might bring something forward on that. So, and then the entrance sign that we've been waiting for out on one oh six, just to update, or not one oh six, on Ten Street out there by the Navy Bridge. He sent me a picture of it today. He is working on it. It's been, it's been done at the beginning of July. But he assured me that it's being worked on. He said he hopes to have it done next week and he will deliver. I know everyone's been questioning as to why it's not out there yet, but then the other thing was, we had a little thing with the dog park this week that someone put on there that they wanted a bunch of chairs for the dog park. Well, the first day they put that on there, we even out there and there's twenty chairs scattered all over the dog park. So we did pull all the chairs out of there and I did quote-unquote on there, which I did not like knowing, especially city stuff back and forth. But I put it on there that we're not gonna allow, but we'll put benches out there, which we added one more bench today. They're going to be stationery benches that we can move around and maintain and they're not just scattered everywhere. And I had a couple of responses back. I didn't get into a middle of responding to them after they had their arguments afterwards. I just told them what we were going to do, when that was the end of it. And we do have the chairs, so the people that donated the chairs want them back. We saved them out the shops so that they can come here.
We just, we treat it like the concert series, like S Y A does with all the sports events. Parents, friends can bring a chair, but then they take it home with them at the end of the year, so at the end of the event, so. That same system can work just fine here.
There were two or three disgruntled people that commented and we just didn't get into with them. Hopefully they understand at this point what it is.
Well, they have the opportunity to come here and talk.
That's always, that's always- And that's what we posted to them on the site.
All right, well, thanks. You've already, you've already got the surface, or the blasting done on the pool?
No, it's not done. They are supposed to, it's approved. They're supposed to come and do it this fall. We're not gonna resurface the pool this fall. We're gonna do that in the spring. But they'll have, the biggest part is probably the hydro blasting and getting it prepped. So they're gonna come back in the spring and they're willing to do that without extra cost for normalization and stuff. So it works out better if they do that. If they do it this fall, we have to have water in that for thirty days afterwards. So it's just better to do it, then it's full and ready in the warm spring, basically.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank all the guys. Looking good. This is what I've been waiting for, city engineers. I am excited. Here we have news tonight.
We did accept bids, or, no, we didn't accept bids. We had our bid letting today for Legacy. We do have confirmation from BP that our designs will be approved and everything else. We're just waiting for a little other paperwork for the actual permit. So we had the bid letting and we will bring that to you at the next meeting.
They come in favorable?
They're looking good. With that project, went over it with Dylan a little bit. We left things pretty much wide open since not many people will be impacted by the project. And once we do award and do a notice to proceed after contracting and everything, that contractor will be able to do winter work if they so choose. But they would also have enough time to finish, do and finish the work in the spring and summer next year, so. That is what we did to just try and keep things as low cost as possible, giving the contractor a bit of freedom.
This is to be completed by the fall of next year?
It is. It needs to have the wear course on by October fifteenth of next year. And all, and everything has to be finalized before the end of December for the grant that we're receiving, so.
Good, great. Excellent. What other wonderful news we got for us?
That was my big news.
What's Nate laughing about?
What?
So what's Nate laughing?
Nate hates laughing at something, I don't know.
That's it?
That's, that's all I have for you.
All your projects are going smoothly the way they should be and?
We did the final walkthrough for this year's C I P. They have a small punch list to get done and then we can work on final paperwork there. Still looking for final paperwork on last year's project. We're almost completed with the signal project to be able to end up for their review. So, yeah, things are going in hand in hand.
Good, excellent, excellent. Glad to hear. Thank you, Donna. Any other questions for dinner? All right. That will take us to, I guess, the library director. Nate?
Sorry, no reports. I didn't pack it today. I, I swear I wrote one. I just never really got the share. That's totally user error. I'm library director, but things are going pretty well. We are going to formalize a borrowing agreement with the Stourville Schools pretty soon. We're gonna be getting with the librarians there in early October and setting up courier back and forth so that the schools have been removed from the Selco system and given an independent catalog, so we're going to be issuing them to agency cards, so teachers and librarians will have, still have access to their library loan there, and I think it's gonna be the bedrock for a really nice partnership between the schools and the library going forward. So that's our big thing that we've been working on since kids got back in school.
Excellent. Got a little water in there. It's supposed to drink rain?
Uh, you know, this last one, we, I think, you know, Sean and Jeff and the, the army that is Public Works did a really good job of protecting us this time around. I think we, they, they solved the-
Sandbagged it or what?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's just like we got an extension on our retaining wall and, my gosh, it's so many things.
Okay, excellent. Glad to hear.
Oh, it's good.
All right, no chief tonight and no pool director. So I'll take this committee commission board of pools, chamber members. Chambers probably relaxing. They just had their fall fest, or no, that was lying, excuse me. But Chambers, not relaxing, they got a big weekend tomorrow. I imagine some of the chamber members have been sampling some of the samples to make sure they're good for the public already. Huh? Jen? You can, don't forget their Oktoberfest, all those, this weekend. E D A H R A, mess of September sixteenth are in there. It was a not a lot of the agenda that night. We're working on, kinda had a little bit of a workshop of what we want for our guys next year. If you wanna keep working on the housing projects, if you wanna build some kind of housing stuff. Finance?
What kind for you? Told you.
I thought it sounded like two or three. Sorry.
Is that what you said, Kelly? Nothing?
I can look on the budget.
All right, library?
I think we're good until November.
Ooh, oh. Park board?
Minutes from last week. Editor representative from S Y B A come in. They wanna make the pad out of brick and article a little bit bigger so it can support basketball and some other stuff. And then, yeah, we'll look at projects that they've been looking at for.
S Y B A is willing to pay to expand the pad to a full-size basketball court that would allow for three pickleball courts and also so it can be a multi-use addition.
That's the selling.
So it'd be a shared cost, but they're willing to make it for the cat reason and stuff like that and do that.
All right, personnel?
I don't look down at personnel.
Do you want personnel too?
Yes.
Craig's not here.
Had any meetings lately?
Excellent. Now that you've set up preliminary, we'll do our follow-up with the union and see where we can end up at now, so.
All right, findings on it? Craig's not here. Cheryl's ready to go on?
October meeting.
Public safety, just ran out the door, but the calls for service for August are in here. Public wards, ready?
Uh, we just met yesterday, so minutes will be forthcoming. Had some discussions on a regional development organization, which could be eleven county area here, so there'll be more information coming out because several different entities are looking at that for this whole region, so.
Full call?
Uh, we meet tomorrow.
Nothing for the transit advisory committee tonight? Nothing on communications? No, we have next under here is open mic. City council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be part of the city business. It must also adhere to data privacy rules, which means no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes. Excuse me. Speakers will be recognized only once. Excuse me again. At this time, I would ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, please. Nobody wants to use it? I wouldn't do all that for nothing. All right, somebody else gets to do it tonight. Who's gonna be?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor to say aye? Before I ask for the last one, did you have something you wanted, you wanted to get? All right.
Signature.
Any of the polls?